April 16th. Thank you for all coming in this wonderful weather. I hope we can have a good meeting so you can enjoy what you've set out to do today with the rain and ice. Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any opposed or all in favor?
Aye.
We need, do we have any, a motion to approve, I should say this. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes of April 2nd? As presented.
I make a motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have received from the town administrator the warrants that have been signed by the select board, so we need to note that. And we've also received, yeah, and, no, that's it. We received the warrants, so we're all set on the warrants. We don't need a motion, right Bill? No, we're all set? No, we've noted. Okay. Danny, do you have a report?
Well, we're just gonna keep dealing with the weather. It might come. It's hard to say anymore. I think they're saying Thursday and Friday, tomorrow raining, snowing. It'd be a while before we smooth any of the different things.
Can't you just do it when you plow the...
Try today. It'd be very smooth.
That's why ours looks pretty good.
We put your roof last on list of great. There's 121 in Eastman there, really bad, real rough.
They get the most traffic, I think.
Yeah, because each one will go over Chester Route 35 down east.
Anything, nothing else we need to know about, everything okay?
Hopefully the storms stop, maybe no one's getting any salt anymore. We got one load. If you weren't said that, it'd be it for the year.
Did you use salt on this one, or?
A little bit.
Well, you've got pretty good inventory right now, right?
Mm-hmm. Two 10-wheeler loads maybe?
Was that off?
I've got three, four loads on order for a month and a half.
I thought, from what you said the other day, you still had a fair amount.
No, it was about two, two and a half 10-wheeler loads. This late in the year, you shouldn't need it.
Any other questions, Danny? We received the latest Excel sheet on the excess weight permits. Ibra Stevens, Jamie Gregory, DML Trucking, and Barrett Trucking are the latest to be added to the list. And I have one more that is on your other list there. Carlton Trucking? Carlton Trucking came today. It's on... Yes, he's right here, so, okay. Okay, so he's on this. Okay, and we have Colin. Any comments, questions? Stan, how old is this?
All right. We had a little bit of a change today on our roof bids. John Halleck has pulled out, I have a letter from him which I will read. He had some concerns about some past work that people were saying, or some people, he did not mention to me who the individuals might have been. I know I had a concern about it. I know a couple of board members had a concern about it. I'm not sure if he was talking about the actual board members having a concern about some past work that he had done. But anyway, he did today, later this afternoon, pull out of the bid, so we only have one bid that we're gonna work on now for the roof. But I do have a letter from John, from John Halleck, it is addressed to the select board. I'll read it just so it is out in the public. I know he was concerned about it. So John Halleck says in this letter, "I would like to address something that has come to my attention. I completed roof work on this addition." He's talking about the addition that we're gonna put the new roof on now. "I completed work on this addition roughly six years ago. At the time of this work, I had contact with the current town manager," and I believe what he means by the current town manager was, or town administrator, was then, not the current town administrator. "But I had contact with the current town administrator and the select board at the time. I presented them with different alternatives to addressing the situation of the roof. My idea was put a sloped roof on it then, which is the current plan. My suggestion was that a sloped roof would fix their issues. The idea was shot down because of budgeting. It was made aware to them at the time that if they did not do this, there would be further issues down the road. I was instructed to repair the roof as is by the select board. I submitted warranty paperwork for the roof repair I completed and never received a signed copy back. They were made fully aware of this and not a permanent fix that could possibly have potential issues down the road. This topic was dismissed by the select board. I wanted to make sure all aware of what occurred." I think there was some possible discussion when he submitted a bid about, geez, we want John to do this work after he had repaired the roof previously, and it has again failed within a pretty short period of time. But I think the general discussion, at least I believe within the select board, is that he was sort of bound by what the select board at the time wanted to do. There might not have been money to do it properly, and it was just a case of just do this and get it done. And as he thought, and he was right, the roof has failed. So anyway, that was his comment on that. And then a second paragraph, it says, "Thank you for the offer to bid on this project. After further consideration, I am deciding to pull out my bid from this project due to the fact that my current workload would not allow me to complete this project in the next year. I will not be attending the select board meeting tonight due to prior engagements. Good luck in your search." Our intent was to have both of the contractors here tonight to explain their process. There was such, it was a $13,000, it was a $13,000 difference in bids on a relatively low bid project. And we wanted to make sure that both these contractors were aware of what they were getting into. Was one bidding too high, or was one bidding very low? We wanted to straighten that out. Tonight, they were both invited. Darlington Sunet is the other bidder. He has done work on the town hall, and he was a big help for us to get to this point in the process. He came down and looked and thought about how we may be able to do different things, so he has been a big help. I would have liked to have had a local contractor, or of course, John Halleck lives just down on Townsend Road. I would have liked to have a local contractor do it, just to keep the money in town and a good relationship with local contractors. But there was such a span in the bids. We did want both of them to come tonight. Darlington was coming. John has since pulled out his bid, and so we did notify Carlton, Darlington Sunet. And we did say to him, if he felt as though it was necessary for him to be here tonight to explain it, he's certainly welcome to be here. I didn't talk to him. I'm sure Bill talked to him, and I guess that he decided because of weather, and he is from Springfield, so he decided not to be here tonight. So we're down to one bid, which is Darlington Sunet, and if everybody remembers from last time, his bid was... Yeah, 37.
The city had the...
Yeah, 37,231. And John Halleck's was 25,000. So there was just such a big discrepancy. We really wanted to sit down and iron it out between the two bidders.
Now, after the bid opening, you and Kathy got together and reviewed the bids that they provided. So you scrutinized Darlington's bid. Everything was in the bid package that has requested?
Yep, pretty much. I mean, it was hard to compare the two. I mean, one was just for bids and specs, "I'll do the work for 25,000," was John's bid, so there wasn't a lot of comparing.
Well, I'm not asking you to compare them. I'm asking you, when you looked at Darlington, and you compared Darlington's to the request that you sent out, did he provide everything we asked for?
And one of the other problems that we did have, and we noticed right off the bat, is John did not have workman's compensation insurance. And I asked him to send me a letter to the case of how he was gonna handle that lack of workman's compensation insurance, which we required to have, and he did not do that. I was supposed to see that on Friday.
Is there anything, based on the information that you have from Darlington, is there anything that you still have concerns, or any reason that you see not to accept his bid?
No, we got his insurance certificate. We went through and very much, he talks about he's gonna use 2x10s, 2x10 rafters, R38 insulation, so he pretty much spells out everything according to what was in the blueprint and the spec sheet.
He's pretty specific about what he's gonna do versus the other bid. He had very little information.
I make a motion to hold.
When is he to start, and what is his payment schedule?
His, and that was the other thing I did ask from John. John didn't submit any sort of a payment schedule, but he did after the fact. And I do have a payment schedule from Darlington, which was included in his original bid spec.
He wants...
He wants, go ahead.
He wants 18,000 at the signing of the contract, and at the completion, he wants the rest of 19,231. But did he say where he can start it?
He didn't, and here, I wasn't that specific, other than we wanted to have it done as soon as possible.
Did he give you any indication of timeline when he would be complete?
Bill's gonna say.
Bill's got a question.
I talked to Darlington and asked him about when he could start. This was about three or four weeks ago, this is before all this stuff happened today. And he told me that he didn't know, two months or so, but once he signed the contract, then he'll give us a date. And that it would probably be about that length of time.
Just as a clarification, since the contracts were on the executive session because of issues, now things have changed. Do we, is it the board's pleasure that we'd like to vote on it today, or do you still wanna go back into executive session and discuss it?
It's the final debate. You have a question?
Are we strapped for time on this, or do we have time for somebody else to give us another estimate on this? I don't think you wanna open it up for more estimates after you've already...
Yeah, the bids, the existing bids are already out.
Okay.
And it becomes very difficult to go out and get bids based on other bids.
After the numbers are... That's the answer. The numbers are already on the surface, that's not the... That's the answer, okay.
My comment also was the fact that Kirket was sent to six people individually, as well as advertised on newspaper, so it wasn't as if we didn't give a whole bunch of people a chance to...
We had, we had six contractors that we felt as though would be good, and several of them were local. And out of the six that we actually sent them specifically to, two responded, and we absolutely had no response to that big, huge ad that was in the newspaper asking for additional bids.
Also, it wouldn't be fair now, because the bid project was published. So anybody who's gonna bid now, all they have to do is just go a little lower. Well, I got that, I got it. So, it's not... Thank you. So that we'd wanna accept this, I mean, is that what the pleasure of the board is? I make a motion, we accept Darlington Sunet's bid as provided with the provision that he can do the work this season.
Can I ask one more quick question? Did he leave widow room if he ran into any difficulties or any unforeseen problems?
What we had talked about during one of the meetings, like one of the pre-construction meetings, was that anything, if he were to get into the existing roof and there was some rot in the existing rafters or anything like that, anything over and above what the blueprint or the actual bid spec stated would be time and material. Because you don't know until you physically deliver it off.
Exactly, so they know if that was...
It's time and material.
Do we have a second for Alan's motion?
I said...
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think a firm date when he can start. Not just, you know, you say this year, or you could start it in November or something. I'd like to see it start in June.
Well, I think, I think Bill's, if...
If we're gonna give him 18,000 after we sign the contract, I wouldn't...
Well, you don't sign the contract, you don't give them money until they start, do you not?
No, sign the contract.
Well, it says signing of contract.
Yeah.
But I would think that...
If I would wanna do that.
I would think, I mean, I can understand him not, without having a signed contract, he can't possibly give you a date when he's gonna start the project. So I think once you sign the contract and he gives you a date, then you could forward him the down payment once you have a date from him. But certainly, if I was a contractor and you just had an open, nothing signed, how can you put a date out, "This is when I'll start your project," when you don't even have a signed...
Sam, I have a question. You were on the board when you hired him to do the front of the town hall. Was he, did he live up to his timeframes?
Yeah, he was very good. And that's the other thing, I mean, this guy, Darlington Sunet, has done work on the town hall in the past, and like I said, he was a big help getting to this point.
I think if we send him word that we're willing to, you know, sign a contract with him, that we said, "We'll sign the contract once we have a promise of date of start."
Sure.
And so we make a commitment, he makes a commitment, and then sign the contract.
And can I request an invoice for the down payment?
Oh, absolutely.
And not just using the contract, unless it depends on using the contract as his initial payment.
No, we need invoices for everything that's done. Any further discussion? So all in favor of Darlington Sunet to do the first phase of the town hall? Jake, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a question? Yes. Okay, is all that conditional upon him giving you a date? No, we approved him, but we're gonna give him his deposit, we're gonna sign the contract once we have a firm date. We've approved him as to do the job, but he needs to give us... The motion to approve him to do the job is not based on him giving you a date? No. Okay. That's all I'm, because when I'm writing this, I'm actually, you know? No, but we're not gonna, signing the contract is conditional upon a date. But not the approval. Okay, as we try to do all the time, as every quarter, we look at the budget. And since we're coming to as very close to the end of the last quarter of the year, I think it's just a good idea that we just kinda look at this thing to make sure that we're not going to find any surprises come June 30th. And if there are, maybe we can do something. I have, I have looked at it. I don't see personally any major issues. I've talked to Kim about it, and she doesn't seem anything, is that correct, Kim?
Right, I'm sorry, but there's some notes there. Once I made mine, my own sheet, I went over, scrutinized it, sorry.
No, I went through it, I didn't really see.
I do have one on the debt service, Kim. And there's a note here, I don't understand, I don't, it's hard to read, but does that mean you underbudgeted the interest expenses?
Yeah, because we have interest payments, and it would be two for an interest and one for a principal. And we only budgeted for one interest rather than having two. Or actually, it probably got posted before July 1st.
But we're still okay, even with that different budget for two?
Yeah. In the next budget, it's got the...
Now, the county tax, is that paid quarterly or something?
The what?
The county tax.
That's paid annually.
So that, we budgeted, and it's less than we budgeted, is that how I...
A little bit less, yeah. Which page is that one on?
Well, it's the second one. There's no page number on mine, so I can't tell.
Over the top of the...
Oh, yes, there it is. Yeah, page two of six.
Yeah, they want to retaliate for their county tax. Yes, we're taking an estimate in the county taxes, but they, you can go to their meetings when the court sets that up for the counties.
And the library is over, is there any reason for that?
The library, that's kind, it's actually more of an in, out, an in, in, and out, okay? So we use it for their payroll, also that same account number, so they pay us back, so we pay the payroll, the med, the bank, and all that, and then they pay us back if we invoice them, so that's number that fluctuates.
And Wyndham Regional, same way, that's over for whatever reason. I mean, not a lot, but...
Wyndham Regional, we have under that is the grant for the betterback roads, so that's got quite a hunk in it. And we're supposed to get reimbursed for that at some point, as soon as it closes out, so...
Let me understand that though, but we have, like, invoices, but are the invoices on the betterback roads thing, that $8,000 betterback roads grant, the invoices are around $6,000, they haven't been paid to Wyndham Regional until we get the money, or have they been paid already?
They've been paid. That's, yeah, they all are stamped with a paid stamp. We have to pay them as they come in, but if you notice on the invoices, it says reimbursable.
Yeah.
And so if they came out of that account, so we need to be reimbursed for them once the grant closes.
But then we're only off by that amount, 1,500?
Where are you guys? Which page?
That's the bottom of page two, Wyndham Regional Commission.
Yeah, we budgeted 13,000.
Maybe it's not there. Maybe that's...
I'm not sure where it shows. Is that on the grants or someplace, another place? I was just wondering if Wyndham Regional did extra services for us or something, that's all.
Now, is it Wyndham Regional, I don't know if that's one of our house, like our, see, this is why I wanted you guys to come with questions beforehand, so we can look at the count. That might be our yearly from Wyndham Regional?
Okay, if you go up to the top of that...
Yeah, that's our yearly.
Yeah, if you go up to the top of the page, the last item in the first section, right above total operating expenses, that's the, that's the Wyndham Regional.
All their expenses from this town.
And that's written on.
Yeah.
And that will all be reimbursed.
Sorry, what was that?
All the 20s.
And my other question, Kim, I'm assuming that the FEMA buyout, that's, is, we get reimbursed for that, or, I don't, we didn't budget anything, but there's an expense of $9,000, or almost $10,000.
It gets moved around when the rent comes to clean up that account, but we have to, we have to hit some account for the expenditures on it.
But it doesn't cost us this money?
No.
That's my, that was my question. That's all I had on my, I don't know if anybody else had anything.
Danny, did you have anything on yours?
We got, we care about fuel is over, repair and maintenance is over. Then you have that what we call Clean Water Act, is actually grants and aid. That shows a negative, but that'd be swapped back out with a payment, 16,200 once the projects are done. So they actually paid for raw material on that, so... My name is, it'll be the fuel and the maintenance.
Well, fuel prices dropped.
And we adjusted the fuel prices pretty hard because of what they were, and we were running with such a surge loss before, so we took and went with the fuel prices and calculated it out, and now they've gone back up.
Could it be the winter, though? I mean, you...
We burn a lot of fuel.
Yeah.
Till the pipe burn a little over 70 gallons today in one truck. So, we've gone through a lot.
The DEF for the equipment, that's new, right? So it's budgeted for the upcoming year, but it's new?
We've always had it, but we always just put it in under the trucks.
Right, so we have a new, we're back at it, the same thing with the mower? Mower, mower?
Yeah, the mower, right. Which would actually overhaul the offset by the mowing contract at 10,000. It's just a different section, so in the end, it kinda washes it out. I think in overall, I think we're pretty good.
Yeah, that was my, that was my take on the...
There's a lot of money left right now showing on materials and supplies, but we haven't been built for all, you know, gravel and stuff that we're gonna use in and buying in, so that's definitely gonna be dropping quite a bit. I still think we'll be, we'll be pretty close.
That's a figure that was...
Yes, but we won't build for our salt, we can't get any money.
Does this reflect your last salt delivery, this one, or is it still yet?
No, there's one load, so it shows like a balance of $2,090, so it's probably like a negative of about 500.
Saving that summer, me, that's all. Any other comments on the budget? Okay, moving around a little. They draft a local emergency operations plan. I'd like whoever's gonna lead that one to do that.
I guess, I think probably our plan is we will draft. Bill's filled in the forms for us, we all have a copy of the Local Emergency Operations Plan, L E O P, L E O P. It's only been, it's been out, we've seen it, we've made some corrections. Certainly doesn't hurt to have more eyes on it to look through it, to see it more. Bill, Fire Department and Rescue, I've both gone through it and made some suggestions also, and I've, you know, there's minor corrections, and we made those corrections for them.
So those corrections from the Fire Department and Rescue are in this already?
Yeah. The only real substantial change is that Alan and Bill have swapped.
Right.
Bill was the emergency manager director, and Al was the deputy. And Bill had come and said because of his extra duties here, or whatever, so they swapped, that Al is now the emergency manager director and Bill is the deputy. It's just a matter of title, I mean, it'll work the same way, it's just that...
Well, except I get, I get his money.
Yeah, you get all the big bucks, but that's okay, so... No. Any, any other comments?
There was, Stan had some. Stan, I checked on the animals in the shelters. That's gonna really be an at-large decision, depending on the situation and what we can do at the time. We don't have any pages or anything like that available, all, you know, just on hand like a thot, might have, but we don't. So it's just really gonna depend. And I think, for instance, if there is a real need for the army shelter at the town hall, and people bring their Pekinese, then we're probably not gonna complain, but if they bring their guard dogs, we probably would ask them to leave them in the car or something. You know, I mean, that's probably the way it's gonna be. We're not, we would not deny people's shelters simply because they couldn't leave their dog after danger. We'll find some way to accommodate them.
One of the things you don't wanna do is tell them that you can't take, you take the dog from the house, or the cats, or whatever. I mean, people, people will stay there.
Yeah, they'll stay home and greet, so...
They will.
But we don't wanna do that. And we had preliminarily, let's just use Iren as an example. If we were going to open the school as a shelter, we did have, at that time, some commitment of people to take care of the dogs, so, dogs and cats, so it is, it's something we would do at Hawk, there's nothing planned. And because of the fact that American Red Cross has told us in the past that they're not gonna open a shelter here, again, for that event, they're saying if people wanna go to the shelter, they can go to Brattleboro. There's no sense in us to have 30 cages around gathering dust and rust, if we're never ever gonna use them, so...
Well, most people have, there is. Well, most people have carriers.
Yeah, they have their own carriers, do so, yeah. But all that'll work, and that's kind of what you do, it's just ad hoc, you make some arrangements.
Wouldn't the Wyndham County Humane Society that were contracted with Take Our Animals in a Case of Emergency for Care?
They probably would, but they would probably be overwhelmed if that, if the rest of that came to that. So we probably should, we will probably have to somehow do something. We don't know how, let's give it ad hoc. There's a bunch of, but again, I like sent these, there's a lot of these, I think I still have two pages back in the Michael works that I need to use. But I'm in there around. So the purpose of this document is kind of twofold. Primary one is so we're, once it's completed and we send it off, we can then be eligible for federal reimbursement. And of course, it's a document for our use as well. That's, fits the letter of the law.
It's our responsibility.
Many of the appendices are done. Quite a few of the appendices are, if you go to, for instance, the Rapid Fire Department, it was really old that. I got a new one from Keith today, and it's all up to date. And so some of the appendices will have to be redone. Some of them I have in PDF, and so I wrote on them and then re-PD F them, but they should be, but, but for the most part, they're in good shape and it is simply this nine, these nine pages that need to go to BDM, they don't care about any appendices, so.
Like civil unrest.
Do we have a motion to accept the revised Emergency Operation Plan? So, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
How, you need to sign that, give it to Bill. I just want to, Bill, I know that I'm, I'm missing one of my classes that I have to go to. And I know, I'm not sure whether Kathy has, has them as well.
I did.
And everybody else does, but we just make sure that, you know, we all as a board commit, sign, commit to all the, you know, to regulations. You know what I'm saying? So if anybody on the board doesn't have it, I know you all gonna, gonna need to do some.
It's the 402.
Yeah, right.
You can do the 101 on your own. That's the 402 before you go. And I'll, I'll either schedule it here or let you know when it's in.
I'm not missing the 402. I, I did the 101, I'm missing the 402. Kathy, have you done both?
I've done, it's instinct man stuff, I've done it.
So you've done, you've done everything, right? The 101 and the 402 something?
The 402 is for supervisors. I don't, you may not.
So you might have to do that with me.
I've done the one with Instinct Command through Rescue and Fire. And also through Red Cross, the Shelter Management.
Yeah. The 402 is for supervisors, for select boards to understand the system. May or may not, Kathy may or may not need that.
I don't know. Anyway, just make sure that we're all today.
I'm, I'm trying to schedule it here.
Okay.
May I ask a question about, I don't know what all is covered in the operation plan, but I'm just curious. What, what is the communications plan in case there is some kind of an emergency in town and we lose phones and of course, we mostly don't have any cell phones? Is there a communications plan?
Here it looks like you want to speak, okay. It's a real, it's going to be a real problem to get communication to everybody if the, if the phones and the cell phones are down. However, in our communication plan, there are, there is contact with the local radio stations or to get them to broadcast, if they're not down, and if you have any way to receive radio broadcast. But the other communication plan, the most basic communication plan would be for, at the beginning, like we did on Monday morning after I ring, we will have people out on all the roads. Their primary, well, primary incident, the two primary reasons for them to be out are to check the roads and mark distances so we can get an idea of damage. But as they go by houses, check on the people in the house. Are you okay? Do you need anything, so? And then bring that back. They will also have radios, so if there's a, if there is an immediate emergency, that means immediate attention, then they would be able to call back to hear of the ELC or to the Town Hall, depending where the ELC is, and, and we could respond to that. But that's the, it, it's going to be really iffy if there's a big problem out there and depending on where the person is located, whether we can get communication back and forth. But that's, that's the plan. We plan to have people on the roads really early to check in.
One of the things that, you know, I think we need to find out about, like at my house, when the power went out this last time, I was out for two days. So I had telephone.
Two days, yeah, two weeks.
This, this last week or so, though, I was out for two weeks. You were out for two weeks? I was out for two days. But anyways, point is, I had, I had phone when it first went out. And then eventually that drained, that battery and that. And then, once that drained and it started beeping downstairs, no more phone. What, and now I have it, have it set up so I can run my generator and charge the whole system. But what I wanted to find out and check with detail is, I have one of those battery packs. It's about this big. It has an air, air compressor, electric jumper, all that. Well, if that's charged up, and I, I think you could plug in your router and, and those two outlets that I have in the basement, which I guess everybody had the same thing. Plug that in, and once you put that electricity into the system with that little charger, I think your phone will work again.
Same, yeah. It's the same thing as having your generator, because once your generator picks on and picks off.
Correct.
It stays plugged in and not at all again.
So if, if it's that simple, it would be, you know, a hundred bucks, everybody could get one of those. Well, pretty near everybody could get one. But the other thing is to find out, get an inventory, who has electric systems, or on my road, there's probably three houses that automatically power, you know, generator picks on by itself. So at least for the neighbors to know, they could go to somebody's house and make a phone call. I think we should follow up on that.
No, I'm still assuming there's wires and air.
Well, that's true. Of course, that's true. But, but some places, I mean, at my house, I have cell service, I have cell service at my house. Provided I keep my cellphone charged, so.
I think that, I think the cell towers have the same problem. I think, unfortunately, they, after a while, the cell tower stopped.
Correct.
And I think they ran out of battery.
Correct.
I think so. All right, that answer your question, Lisa?
Yes, hoping for no emergency.
Hold on, trust me. The Village Park, limited discussion. Alan, that was your thing that you wanted, so bring us up to the end.
Well, I sent out to all of the boards. That document that we got from Hayden Lake, outdated almost a year ago, May 2017. He made several observations and shared with us. To date, we have made no plan to take action on that. I understand that there is a feeling on the board that we should get the money from the timber sale that's going to happen here, and the timber showing for that is April 30th. I, I'm okay with that, but I think instead of waiting until we get the money, we could have a plan in place of what we're going to do. So as soon as we have the money or the commitment for the money, we could start that work. And, and that work that I'm referring to is the hazard trees and the work on the barberry and the.
Buckle.
Buckle, right. So we have a committee now that is, I guess, charged with that as well as the building. I'd be willing to continue to kind of move some things along on it. I, I've talked, I have a county forester that's going to come and walk that property again with Hayden and look at it. But I'd like to see us work on having a plan in place of, you know, who's going to do the work? Are we going to do it all mechanically, are we going to cut it and herbicide, or what are we going to do to eradicate those invasives, as well as how are we going to treat the hazard trees sort of there?
I, I see Stan, you and Kathy are on the buildings and grounds. But Alan has all the knowledge of the, of the forest, but maybe he could, probably because you can't have three people meeting, because it becomes a public meeting. So maybe there's a way that somehow, you know, he could be a subcommittee or work along with you guys to help you with the plan or something. I'm, I'm just looking at that.
No, I think that's fine. I think Alan certainly has the, the background and he's, he spent more time up there than probably both of us put together. I think it's a great idea, but I do think that I'm probably one of the individuals that would like to have the money in hand before we start spending money on a project that's not assigned to it. I guess I'd have to look and see what, what's involved. I'm going to, I know that Sam, somebody.
Sam Schineski.
Is going to meet with, with him up there. And hopefully, we can get it, you know, get an opportunity to meet with the both of them. And we can at least start getting a thought process of what direction we want to go.
That, that's what I'd like, is to have a.
Have a plan in place and some numbers and.
If we do this, it'll cost this much. If we do this, it'll cost this much. Rather than wait until the money's in the pocket and then we start to talk and, and waste the whole field season.
All right, any other discussion on the Village Park? Public comment? Any public comments?
Yeah.
Yes?
I'm hoping that we get the agenda email distribution back. You know, for years, we had emails sent to anybody in the community who wanted to be on the list with the agenda of the meeting. And it's really helpful. And for some reason, like now, the website did not have the agenda until this morning. So I'm just asking if it would be possible to get that back.
It, it's very possible. If you remember back when, it expires every year on January 1st. So if you wanted to continue, you'd have to let us know, and then we would put you back on the list. That's.
Is there a list now?
Yes, there was.
It wasn't updated.
We have a list. We have a list.
I don't have a list.
Well, there is, there is a list on the computer somewhere, who gets to mail the agenda. And I think that the Fact TV does and what, the papers get it, whatever. But the individuals, you have to redo every year. So if you want to be on that, we will do that.
Yeah, I would be happy to do that if we.
But you just have to let us know, Lisa, that we.
I thought we had decided that we were not going to send out the agenda due to the open meeting in the public and who we're going to leave off the agenda, off the sending out.
But that's the discussion I remember too.
Yeah, so I was going to say, that was the last discussion, that we were not going to send them anymore. They were available online and then out in public. Because too many people were missing, not getting them and wanting them, and there was a lot of back.
I, I remember that discussion, but I don't know if that was actually approved by the board. I know what the board did approve is that the list would sunset, sunset on the 31st, the 7/31st of each year. And if you wanted to continue, if you go back in the minutes, I think you'll see that. And, and then you just, you get, we just redo it again. I know there was a discussion about the issue of sending it out, because if you send it out and it fails to go out, then you put, you're opening up yourself to some liability.
On the website?
But if you, if you have it on the website, that sort of automatically covers that, doesn't it?
Yeah, I Googled, I Googled, it's one on the website. It should have been there on Thursday.
Okay.
I put two things on the website for the planning commission and forgot the one for the.
Okay.
Like, it should have been there.
I think you're opening yourself up for problems because of public requests, and if the public is requesting that they get this agenda, and for some reason, you don't get the agenda to them, then you're opening yourself up to a liability of not meeting the public's request.
Well, that's what VLCT said.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what VLCT said.
But I'm not sure we actually had a full discussion on the board about it. I don't remember, you know, like.
Yeah, but how, if it's posted in legal places, how could you be remiss? I mean, you have given a public request, anything that's emailed to us saying the public wants it. We have only five days to give it to them. And so if you write in the beginning of the year that you want to have this, and then we for some reason aren't able to or we can't, then we're not meeting our requirements. And so the town itself is putting themselves up for a liability for.
Because, Lisa, you might, you might not be in Grafton, so you might be in Florida, you might be in California, you might be in New York or Boston, whatever. And if, if you relied on this agenda and it, for some reason or other, it, it doesn't get there either by error or by email didn't make it for whatever the reason. Then, and there was something over there that you were interested in talking about or coming back for or writing a letter about, then we could put ourselves in jeopardy. This is what VLCT has said.
But if it's on the website, then there should be no problem.
That's right, so.
It should always be on the website.
It is, and Bill said he screwed up, so.
We'll put it on the website, but that's.
But it is, it is posted in the store, library, and at the Town Hall. So, and, and copies are all, always available.
I think it's at the store.
It's store, library, and Town Hall. And if you need a copy, you can always get it, plus the website.
So is, so is that now the decision that there will be no email list?
I.
I mean, is that the conclusion?
That's what I got.
That's what, I remember the.
I don't remember that.
I still remember the follow-up of the VLCT and the recommendation.
Bill, I just, I reread the law today to see where we were with that. Through special meetings, special meetings, that just come out of the blue. You can put your name on that list from January till December.
Okay.
But for regular meetings, there is no such requirement.
Okay.
That, that, so it is just for special meetings that you make that request. That's, that's what the law is.
Not, then that's what.
You can't do more, but that's what the law.
So you're saying for the 24-hour notice?
Yeah.
You can send out.
You can say, anytime you're going to have a special meeting, I want to be on that list in that last third year, yes.
Okay, so if anybody wants to be in that list for the special meetings, just let us know, we'll put you on that list, if and when we have special meetings.
So that will not cover regular.
No.
Schedule meetings.
Any other public comment? Any new business? Okay, we need to, we have an executive session on personnel. So we need a motion to entertain executive sessions.
Make the motion, we go into a technical session to discuss personnel.
Do you have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you for coming. Drive safe on the way home.